Good afternoon and welcome to our student line interview with Alicia Little, who is running for the Wayzata School Board. My name is Ankeen Buhmar and I'm here today with our student interviewers, Scott Vesota, Elise Burns, and Stella Snodgrass. Together, we're part of the Wayzata School Board Spotlight, a student initiative created to improve voter turnout, strengthen community education about the upcoming Wayzata School Board election, and advocate for student representation on the board. Here's how today's interview will work. Each student interviewer will ask a set of pre-written questions. Then the candidate will respond and then the students will have a chance to engage in a short discussion. To keep things moving, each question, candidate response, and discussion will be limited to about three to five minutes total. I'll be keeping track of time and I'll hold up a sign when there's one minute remaining. If we go over, I will step in and cut off the discussion so we can cover everything. At the end, we'll close with questions submitted live by the community on Instagram and Facebook. Our goal is to create a conversation where students and the community can learn more about each candidate in a fair and engaging way. Thank you, Alicia Little, for joining us today and let's begin. Student one will begin with their first set of questions on visions and priorities.
Okay, what's inspired you to run for the Wayzata School Board? And what perspective do you hope to add to decision-making?
Oh, I haven't practiced my like very compact stump speech, I suppose. But for me, it feels like it's been kind of an organic process. My family moved here back in the day or my youngest or my oldest child at the time was entering kindergarten. And I'm a stay-at-home parent at this point. My background actually is as a pediatric occupational therapist. So I had been working at St. Paul Public Schools and worked in Chicago prior to that. Loved it, but once we had our third child, decided, you know, being at home for a while was a waste. So got involved in volunteering, joined the PTA, then I was president of PTA. Then I joined District Liaison Board and I found a lot of just passion in that experience. It just feeling like I could be involved in not just what my school was doing, but what other schools were doing. And sort of found that people in my community, my friends, my neighbors would come to me right. I'll be out walking the dog and they'll be like, Alicia, I heard about this thing going on. What can you tell me about that? And a lot of times I was able to answer it or I knew who to ask and I knew how to get that information from them. So it's kind of been an organic experience. As far as what I think I'd bring to the board, from my understanding right now, there's no one on the board who has a special education background. I feel like that's a really important piece that I'd like to bring, especially in lieu of legislation, funding cuts that are being made. I think it's really important to just keep in mind that every student has got their abilities and challenges. And it's really important to make sure that we have the resources to meet every single student.
Yeah, what are you guys' thoughts on that?
I think that was very comprehensive. I have no questions about that.
So what specific parts teasing could be added to Wayzata Community for a special education programs?
Um, I think right now the district is doing a great job. I think resources ultimately is usually what it comes back to. And that's funding for the general fund, but special education specifically. Without getting too into the woods, students that have IEPs, those are mandated, you know, funds that need be, resources that need to be given to that students. We do have quite a few students in the district. I mean, I say quite a few, I think sad is maybe about 5% that have what are called 504 plans. And those are not funded from special education, but the expectation is legally they're binding for an educator to implement some of those qualifications. And so what I found even as a parent with students who have had some additional needs in the district, a lot of times our teachers are already really busy. They've got really big classrooms and if they have a classroom of 30 plus students, especially at the younger ages, and 50% of them have a 504 or IEP and maybe they have a paraprofessional that's in there 50% of the time, they can get it really overwhelming really quickly. So I think funding is a big piece of it and just kind of making sure that we're keeping special education. And not just special education, I think just, um, I sometimes will say the American Sustainability Act, you know, that's where we started to say, oh, we need to have ramps getting on and off of street corners. And we need to have elevators in certain buildings or ramps to access. And the reality is it's not just people in wheelchairs that utilize those. It's moms in strollers, it's people who maybe have a walking stick or have some sort of impediment that, you know, we all actually are benefiting from those things. So just kind of keeping that top of mind that it's not always, oh, we're just gonna, you know, do this one intervention for this one type of student. It's actually gonna probably benefit everybody to some degree.
Um, so you, you talk about how the students in specific classrooms, you know, there's an overwhelming portion of students who have 504 IEP plans. How specifically would we plan to handle that? Give it more thought.
Well, it would be ideally, I know one thing specifically of the younger age, and we're a district that's been growing so much, so a lot of that has to do with more than likely having a couple more schools come on board. Like we're talking about building elementary and middle schools and that's the distance future. But it's getting those class sizes down. I think Wayzata always prided themselves of having smaller class sizes. I would imagine maybe even when you guys were in elementary, they were not as large as they are today. So I know from speaking to teachers and paying in terms directly, that that would probably be the number one priority. Is getting funding so that we can hire more teachers. Every single teacher we can add on is less class sizes in general. So.
Great, let's move on to the second question.
Wonderful, okay. If elected, what would be your top priorities for this district?
Okay, I feel like a huge part, and it sounds a little generic, but from my perspective, it's community engagement and communication. One thing that I've brought up over the last five years that I've done on the District Liaison Board specifically is that, and I'm actually loving, if you haven't seen already, we have a podcast now, which I've already just made it in one, which will be dropping soon, which is kind of exciting. But I think when people know what's going on, they're less likely to feel frustrated or like they don't understand. I know that sounds really simple, but it's so common that I will have a parent, especially with all of the boundary changes that have been happening, where kids are being pulled from their schools. I know we dealt with that and my kids went to Kimberly Lane and after my kindergarten's first year, Metta Ridge opened and like 80% of the school and teachers shifted. And then Northwood's opened and then another shift happened. And so there's a lot of change, people get really anxious, they want to stay where they're at, they know how the things are going. But a lot of times when I wasn't able to have a one-on-one conversation with that person and explaining, okay, this is why. And then I would even use my own personal experience. It's like when my oldest went to middle school, he all of a sudden was like, I know so many kids. Because I've now had exposure to way more kids than I would have if we would have had all these shifts happen. So trying to make sure that the communication coming from the top is getting to everybody. Because the reality is people are busy. I mean, as you said, turnout even for school board elections is usually not super high. It's hard, we're busy. And so trying to find creative ways to share what's happening at the top and give out to the community is really important. We go on and on about that. I mean, the other thing is I know part of the district liaison, we had guest speakers and we had learned about like the Compass Program and Wayzata High School. And I'm going, we're all, we all had elementary kids and they're like, we need to get this out so that people when they've got a first, second grader realize like, wow, this is like, I stick with this. And realize like how many cool programs are going to be available at my school. So that's one thing. Um, I think another one for me personally is technology. In the midst of so many changes, AI, everything else. I have a parent who, my daughter is out there probably with growing eyes, but we've had a firm no phone until the grade or until freshman year, actually. So after being grade, and I know that that's maybe a little bit much, but it's been on the forefront of my mind for a long time. I've seen firsthand even with having iPad use in schools. I am an OT, which is a regional therapist, and I used to help children with handwriting, fine motor skills. And I've seen a lot of students struggle now because you're not really expected to do much writing. It's a lot of typing, there's not as many fine motor things that are happening actually. And luckily we don't have as much to use in elementary ages. But I just want to keep a focus on that and be a voice in the room a little bit about that.
What do you guys think about that?
Well, I know you talked about your creative ways of passing that communication to each and every single individual thing. Like can you elaborate on what those creative methods of communication would be?
Well, like I said, I think the podcast is great. Obviously, if you don't like podcasts, maybe I won't get you in the same way. We know, I mean, I can't give you the numbers that I've heard from like our technology communications leads in the district that they can actually see how many people click on like the school newsletters. And it's really low. I mean, and for people to scroll all the way through all that information and actually click on things. I just think a lot of times those newsletters, it's free resource when you need it, but it's not necessarily going against people. So I do think we are in a world of social media. I think it's really important to see more and more. I've been loving the district doing highlights on various teachers and activities that they're doing or creative things that are happening. Because I think once you kind of get people in with some of that more creative fun content, they're probably gonna feel more invested and maybe pay more attention to some of the like not so exciting information. So.
Great, let's move on to the third question.
Okay, um, what do you see as the biggest challenges facing Wayzata Public Schools today? And how would you address?
Um, I think the biggest challenge, and we're definitely doing much better now. I know when COVID came through, we are at a growth mentality here in Wayzata. We've had so much of, you guys know how many houses are going up and it's lovely. We've got so many new people moving specifically for the Wayzata School District. Every single new builder sign that says, you know, Wayzata Schools, that's a selling thing and that's great. When COVID came, we actually saw a pretty big drop in enrollment. I think a lot of students here went to other districts that did allow in-person schooling when they were still doing at home. Some people kept their kindergartners home. So I know, at least I've been hearing from super tech for the last five years, you know, that we've been trying to be really careful about our finances because that's essentially where the funding comes from. Every student that have a building is where we get funds. So at this point, I think growth, we're back on track, but we're kind of busting at the seams. So especially our northern schools, above 50 through north of 55 here, school classrooms are overflowing. There's, you know, just not as many resources as we'd like to have. And I hear that a lot, especially at elementary level. Even with our middle schools, like I'm sure you've maybe heard, West is doing a big renovation right now of all locker rooms, trying to get more classrooms in. They tried to do a boundary shift last year to have three elementary schools feed into each middle school just to like change that burden a little bit and quickly realize like, oh, East and West just don't have the size for that. So Central's back to four, which is fine, but I do, I'm on the PTA and help with it at the middle school. And, you know, we hear a lot like, oh, we really, it's hard to do dances because we have so many kids. It's hard to have outdoor time because there's just too many kids. It's hard to do, it's hard to do it. So it'd be really nice, I think it's really important for the district to feel like, if your student's going to one middle school, they're getting very similar experiences that we get at any of the middle schools. Same for elementary school, every school's gonna have their own culture, but ultimately you're still getting the same experiences, the same resources, the same ability to have fun with them and, you know, different classes and things like that. So I think, you know, the biggest challenge right now that I see in Wayzata District is not only managing the growth that we've had, but also just make sure that we are continuing to pull ourselves to those high standards. When that goes back again to trying to get as many teachers on board, get our classroom sizes down, make sure we're not cutting really important things like music and library time. We've really lost some of our librarians and so there's a lot of activity. Make sure our classes aren't leaving some of the extracurricular activities. So.
Yeah, that's great. I think all of you guys that come from different middle schools, right? And I think that Scott, you have like a school dance, right, in less middle school? And you were talking about how like it's hard to do that in a lot of schools. It's just due to like size and like population at these middle schools. Maybe you guys can talk a little bit about how your experiences were at these little schools? And then you guys noticed those overstepping and overcrowded issues?
Oh, absolutely. So I went to Central and at the time it was very full as it is now. And I think that that was one of the struggles for me. And I came from a smaller school too, moving into the district at eighth grade. And it was very interesting to see how my class sizes went from 24 to around like 32, 33, 34. That was very wild for me as a student. So that's very great. Thank you.
I went to East, it was the smallest one. And at the time, I know there's three that go into it now, but at the time there's only two. So I did not have a problem with it still ahead. I actually didn't even leave, I mean, we were online in most of the middle school, but I mean, I personally didn't notice a lot of the hot sizes. So we definitely had different experiences.
We had a dance.
Oh, yeah, I was gonna chime in there. I don't really like, oh, I actually really pushed and led the committee for starting the school dance. So we're gonna start school dances, I think this will be our third year. I feel like the first year was when my count is just to start, I was sixth grader. So yes, and we've had to do some adjustments though. And it's been an interesting thing because you can't host everyone, you can't say everyone comes. So I think the first year we did sixth and seventh and then just eighth. Then we found out eighth graders, that was too cool, so not many of them came. So then we were like, oh, we'll just do a sixth grade dance and then combine the seventh and eighth. So we're still working on it, but yeah, that's a good point.
Yeah, great. Speaking of enough to put us off, we'll move on to the second section now. But that was a great conversation, hopefully we can see those school dances in the future. So let's turn to questions about student experience and equity. Student two, Elise, for leaders of that section of questions.
How familiar are you with our district's current policies and opportunities in areas where continued growth?
Um, I guess I would say I, I think I probably more abreast of it than maybe a typical community member. Mostly just due to my involvement in the district level. I feel like I have a good relationship and understanding. There's been a lot of reports from various, you know, whether it's human resources or education or curriculum. You know, different groups will come and speak to us about different things. So I think they were all just something more specific, but like generally speaking, I feel like I have a pretty good handle on what the district is focusing their energy on or what they feel like is needed in the future.
Where do you guys see areas where continued growth?
Yeah, I, so I, I have a question that that'll kind of relate to that, but it's also a little bit about like, about all these two things. You know, the last section and what Elise asked and what Anke just asked. Um, because I know you mentioned that the district uses language like bursting out of the seams, right? Like how familiar are you with the, um, like the, the, the funding for the class sizes? Just doing to kind of tackle some of the stuff as well as the enrollment policies and the debt that Wayzata Public Schools is in right now. Because the, the permanent conundrum is the fact that we need more funding, but the fact that we're also a little bit behind.
Yes. I don't want to speak out of, I'm not in the inner circle there, but my understanding is that we more than likely as a district be coming to taxpayers in next, in 2026 asking for. So bond levy, I think the terminology.
We are going to be doing a referendum next year, which is really important. That's why we need to get out of your vote and understand what priorities are on that referendum, those levies, because that's where our taxpayer money is going.
Yes, and so the land has been purchased, we have it built to do, build a new elementary or middle school. Even if all of that goes according to plan, my understanding is I think a middle school can take up to three years from like groundbreaking to open. And elementary is supposed to be two years and so, and it's not that we don't have buildings that don't have space. So that's why the district is choosing to put a lot of funding, our money in right now to the Wayzata getting renovated. Because that's gonna get them this, you know, so that we aren't super uncomfortable. Those students have more living space for the next few years. So we're actually able to make some of those changes. And like I said, I know some of our southern schools have a little bit more space here and there. And so that's where the whole reboundary came in is, you know, trying to make sure we're filling every single school to the max capacity. It's really, you should not have the kind of taxpayers or referendum asking for more money if you have schools that have space or have buildings that have open areas. So that's what I'm understanding of that part.
Thank you.
Yeah, great. How do you think the school handles interventions too? I know you had said that you had like a background in OT. And I think that one of the ways is not necessarily a full intervention, but academic mentoring is very important in the high school level. And how do you think that could spread out to middle schools or even elementary schools? Do you think that could be a priority?
I personally would love that. I mean, I don't want to speak too much about my own children, but I did, you know, speak to my, I had a freshman and he is a student who definitely would have benefited for maybe a little bit more of like, once he comes home, it's sort of like we're off to whether, whatever the school, you know, the fun event is or it's a disconnect. And speaking to his counselor, it sounded like maybe there was a little bit more of an academic mentorship program and that sort of dissipated at some point, but that, you know, we're gonna come into this school here with formal plan that like every class that he's in, there's gonna be people that will be in the library, maybe present here and there. That's like the high school level. At the middle school level, I think something like I mentioned earlier, maybe off camera, was like central middle school trying to do central change agents, trying to pair up, you know, students kind of being a mentor and advocate for younger students who can help in certain ways. But I think that in general, understanding the amount of time, thought and energy that goes into interventions for every single child is a lot. It's a really big heavy lift. And if we don't have people in the buildings that can do that, it's a really big burden for teachers. And then parents can start to feel frustrated and students obviously are feeling frustrated. So again, it comes back to resources mostly and having more teachers with more building staff.
Thank you for that. Let's move on to our second question. How do you make students' voices are included in the school board decisions?
In any way possible. I love, I mean, I've said, I think it's so great what you guys are doing here. I think the idea of having more student involvement at the school board level is amazing. I think the fact that you guys are interested in it, it's just like really reassuring as an adult and as parents, you know, kids that like you guys are really finding this interesting. I think it's really important ultimately. I'm only, I only know what I know from being in the building for a little bit that I am, and that definitely goes down. I mean, in middle school, I'm in way less than I was in elementary and in the high school level. I think I passed out student IDs last year, but otherwise I'm barely in the building. I don't really get to see what's happening in and out. And I think hearing from you guys directly, like this is your school, this is where you're spending a huge portion of your life. So hearing like, hey, this is something that I know not just I'm struggling with, my friends are struggling with, or here's something that I'm observing that I think could be a really easy thing. So I just believe it this way. I think, again, I think collaboration and communication is like 90% of the issue in most cases. Kind of talk about it.
Are there any specific initiatives in regards to, you know, student communication versus like administration and board communication that you would propose?
I will be honest, not being on the board previously, you'll probably get more information in that regard from some of the incumbents who have been on. I don't really know what that process is right now. I'm not sure how much the board has been receptive to student voice or how the student voice communicated in those ways. I would like to think that I know that's an important piece that hearing the district is saying that they want. They want to make sure they're hearing from students and that there's a collaboration there. So I would do my, I mean, in my opinion, it's very important and I would do my best to have that be a part of things for sure. But streamlining it or maybe finding a way that's gonna help most students feel comfortable. But that wants to feel great, you know, maybe sending a refreshment email or something. So again, there's more of a like, I don't know, you guys, it's, 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 you could write something out or email to a certain thing and that gets us, it's helpful, but I'm old and I don't know all of the ins and outs of how it's handled right now.
Thank you.
Great, does anyone have any more comments, questions on that? All right, then we can move on to our third question. What steps would you take to improve mental health support and wellbeing for students?
That's a big one. I think you guys would probably have more perspective on that, at least at the age. I grew up in a much smaller town, went to a much smaller school, not nearly as resource as we are here in Wayzata. Worked in mostly Title I schools, which is low income for the most part. And I see the beauty and the benefits of being in a district like Wayzata where there are so many resources and there's so many opportunities. And I will be the first to say, like especially for students who maybe are not super into sports, they can find something, especially at the high school level, because there's so many opportunities. One of the things I found growing up in a smaller town is if you didn't play the three core sports or you didn't think someone to play a year, like we're kind of out of extracurriculars to leave school. I think that that's great. On the flip side, I think there's a lot of pressure put on kids today to be thinking about. I do have a child who's, you know, playing soccer at a high level and the amount of, I mean, it started as young, it's eight years old where it's like, we're already talking about like recruiting and, you know, what team you're gonna be on and how many thousands of dollars you're gonna spend and how much travel you're gonna do. And I just think that's in every aspect of kids' lives right now. And then you add on top of it, technology piece, which I know can be lovely, but I also know like we all have the attention spans of that and it's getting worse. And so all of that together, combined with school. I mean, I know right now parenting in high school or it's like, how many IEP classes? I mean, I'm on the mom's page and people are constantly saying like, is my student doing that? Are they doing too much? What are we missing out on? And so I think we're all stressed and we all know it's too much, but we're not exactly sure how to clean things down. And so I feel like I spend a lot of time and energy listening, reading, researching in these areas because I'm trying to do my best as a parent. And so I feel like that would hopefully translate in my time on the board or maybe be sure that we're doing what's best for our students to not feel like, I say regularly, probably annoyingly, so like, these are the best days of your lives. Like really, this is a great part of your life, work, your responsibilities, your stress should hopefully be as low as it's going to be. Because unfortunately, when you get older and you're an adult, it does get more. So I want you guys to enjoy it and not feel like not even experiencing high school or experiencing middle school. Like buckle up to it and try to enjoy it and know that ultimately you're gonna land somewhere great as long as you're following your passion and your like what actually drives you and you're not trying to fit yourself into what someone else is telling you to do or what you feel like to do. But.
I would like to ask you guys, like if you feel worried about mental health resources at our school and like, where do you see room for growth?
So one of the largest things that I see is we have like mental health resources available by school. You know, there's like the tip line, if you've heard of that, there's a posters regularly like, I'll reach out if there's somebody who needs help. I never hear of anybody doing it. So I don't know how much it is a like clarification piece or it's simply, we're doing fine, which is like, but. Um, more what I'm trying to get is like, maybe the part that I'm just confused about is, is like, when is it okay to reach out? You know, like when, if you're struggling too much, like what does it look like? Like what are the signs for like when you actually need help versus like when you're like, no, I got this, like this myself. Stuff might be the important piece.
I think that one of my favorite, well, I agree with Scott, I don't, I mean, they are available, we see them. But I think the thing that's helped my number is on our student IDs. So the school does provide us with, you know, phone numbers and fun slogans, fun posters. But I think that the only one that I really pay attention to and actually student run, like Scott can probably hunker to, the positive positivity, which they bring in like golden retrievers during finals week and they have them. Yeah, it's super fun. So I didn't know about that. That's amazing. Uh, but city council does that, okay?
Yeah, it's just, it's, it's a really fun, like low pressure event. And maybe, you know, that's, that could be a conversation too, where it's not like, okay, let's sit down and have a discussion about your feelings. It's just like, you know what, here's a distraction, focus on this, you know, focus on everything else in your life for 30 minutes. Because that's kind of what that goal of positive positivity is. Seven forty-five, eight, 10 AM, 20, 25 minutes of just petting dogs. That's all you gotta do, that's all you gotta think about. And then you can tackle the rest of the day. So, you know, it's fun.
I actually volunteer with the Bond Between, which is a local rescue, doing puppy parties. And so if you need an extra connection there, because usually puppy is like 12 weeks and under, which is extra, extra sweet because they're super tiny. But I love that. I mean, can I ask you guys, do you feel, because, yes, I get it, like doing the actual call to help or the hotline, that always feels, I think nobody realizes they're there until it's like, they're really there. And unfortunately, that's helpful, yes, but it'd be great to get it, you know, way back when you were starting to kind of feel things rise and like, it's overwhelming. So do you feel like you are able to access your counselors, your teachers, like trusted adults at school? And feel like that's like a touch point for you?
I would say honestly, so I think it depends. What's hard about it, what I would say is hard is like there are kids going through like all high school or that have never really spoken to their counselor. But mainly because I think a lot of it has to do with the student being the first one to reach out. And I know that counselors are super busy, so like it's okay. But also I would say it would be very helpful on the student front to be able to have more reaching out. Like not having the student have to be so assertive.
Something that's kind of built in, that you can access. And it's not reaching out and making that person.
Yes, because all of the adults in the building are incredible, they really are. But sometimes like they have us, like they have a whole 32 kids they have to watch out for. And so it really comes down to like, can the student make the relationship with the adult? And I think that's what should be a little bit more bridge together.
Let's, thank you, that was a really good comment. I would like to move on to the last section of the interview, or the second to last, including the live questions, which will become a part. So section three is community and governance, and Stella will be asking those set of questions.
Yes. Okay, first one is, what personal or professional experiences prepare you to contribute to guiding our district's future?
And I know you're already kind of touched on that, but going into each one would be great.
Yeah, I mean, uh, I think I was, maybe when I was doing the podcast, some of those PTA moms were laughing at like, don't run away from us when you see us on the street. Because that's kind of like what has happened is I've been on so many boards over my life. I mean, I think I was on state for comms groups at some point. I actually helped out with our like HOA stuff and PTA and District Liaison. And I think the main thing that I've learned is being on a board is, it's a lot of doing the work that maybe others aren't necessarily finding the time or the ability to do. But also getting a lot of, I don't know, so that you're just a little bit different. So I think in general, I've been on just a lot of different volunteer or board type situations. Which is where I guess I felt like it's just sort of natural progression to feel like I can channel something down from it by energy into something that can maybe have more of an impact than I've been able to in some of those other groups. So, um, yeah.
I know you guys are all involved with like a variety of volunteer experiences, have different clubs, organizations. Could you speak on where you would feel the board could contribute more to those? Or just areas where you feel like your clubs and extracurricular activities could use more resources or attention?
Well, um, for me as student council, you know, we've obviously already kind of touched on the super representative on the board. One thing that I also really like the idea of are members of like students on board. Because we do something as students. Because we do something as student council once or twice a year where the board meets student council, right? And they, you know, take a seat in their chairs and they say, okay, what are you going to talk about? It's like, um, well, this, this and this, okay? But, you know, attending some board meetings as I have over the summer, the board talks about things I've never even thought about, you know, and it's like, oh, like, that's a thing. And I actually have comments on that. I have things to say about that, you know? So having the board facilitate those conversations or seven students facilitate those conversations, we need both sides, but I'd like to see more of the board facilitating those conversations with us.
Love that. I think that'd be great more. You don't know what you don't know. And so, yeah, being able to kind of get in on the other side and then that might spark people like, oh yeah, we should look on that too.
And I would also say like, with the, the board is like, that is such a great example of leadership and, um, being a part of NHS or link crew or peace leading and stuff. I think that like, one of the ways that the board can also help is just making sure that like, everyone knows that they can be a leader. And maybe that's connecting to students directly, whether that's through student council or through other programs. But I really think that like, the school board a little bit of a divide, but I think that like more involvement would be incredible for different people to see that like, there is different opportunities for everyone. Like that. So I think that could be a great security there to give. And students that might not even realize it's something that really does spark them. I mean, if you're not exposed to it, you have no idea. So, yeah, I think that would be, I think, great.
Do you have any perspective on feed theater arts kind of things, please?
Uh, I mean, I feel like the theater board, like the theater has its own kind of PT, like, we have our own teach, like, parents have their own board, maybe, or feel like we're not as connected to school board. So, and I'm like. When you're talking with theater, do you feel like there's been any changes or cuts to what you guys used to do or what you want to be able to do? It's just like you're being told like, it's not possible for any reason or not. I mean, that's great. Also good to hear.
All right, I think we can move on to the second question.
How would you keep parents, students and staff informed and engaging in board decisions?
Again, I think that's coming up with really creative ways to just get the communication out in a way that doesn't feel like another email to scroll through or another, you know, just like newsletter that feels like it's just got a million different things. I personally do better with like bite-sized chunks and so, and also multimedia, you know, some people are going to do better listening to podcasts, watching a video. Um, I think all of that, I would just love to see more of it. And I think we're moving in the right direction. And I mean, like I said, listen to the first podcast, it's really good. It's all about like, you know, kindergarten enough to expect. It's like, you know, parents and things like that. But I think there's a lot of really good ideas coming out about topics that people interview. I did put, you know, for you guys, I think you guys would be a great one to do, um, with that too, but to me, finding a way to keep people where they are and they're already really busy, overwhelming lives and make it something that they go, oh my gosh, I had no idea this was happening. I want to get more involved. I mean, I think that's been a huge thing I've learned, especially on the PTA, which is back to like, don't run away from you, straight, because I'm going to ask you to volunteer, but like, try and come up creative ways. Like, I know it was in Central this year, we're doing covice presidents because it just feels less overwhelming. That's when people try to do meet and greets volunteers that just come together and it's like, find a friend or two and do the kind of activity you want to do. Like, don't, we're not going to tell you you have to do bingo night and if you can't bingo, you still have to do a type of thing. So try and come up creative ways to just get people to go, I want to help, I want to do something that feels overwhelming. I don't know if you know how to get involved.
Can I ask how you're promoting this podcast?
I personally am not. Zach Nelson, who is our like communication, um, community agent, I mean, I personally am doing it on like my Facebook pages and my social media right now. Um, I think they're just getting off the ground. My understanding is he's recording with you right now to sort of have enough that we can start. I'm not sure what Zach is being one of me. Um, right now, there's just one out, but I know I'm going to get on to more when I leave.
That's great. You could definitely amplify that.
I was going to say, students, if you guys can like involve, you know, like, say you like it or that you watched it or give any feedback, I think that's just going to get more on that. Right now, it's kind of Zach and Trevor are talking about you guys, you know, in a room, making this happen. So if you guys get more involved and like, yeah, totally saying, hey, we got this cool, we want a theater program to be highlighted. You guys can talk about some of your upcoming productions, some of the other clubs and stuff that you guys are doing.
I love that. Can I ask, can you guys get your information about things happening in the district and what?
I don't really care. I'm being serious. I'm in the newsletters, but I.
I also read the newsletters.
Get me here, you're one of the. Well, I would say like, one of the things, at least with a lot of the parents that I know, is like, they want an opportunity to help, like, they would. And like, I think for them, it's just they don't know what's going on. So how would you like be able to make sure that for parents everywhere in all of the schools know that like, there is a place that they can help with? Whether that's in a community thing or, yeah, what would you say?
It's a good question. I mean, again, I feel like sometimes I'm in the minority in these meetings where we've gone so many virtual options, you know, like the community education is these great, I have special speakers come in and I get virtually, we aren't able to access so many people, but I'm always sort of saying, let's not make it all virtual, like, let's do every other. I know we've done it, but this really is not me doing it virtual every other month. If you need a person and in-person meetings, you guys probably know this, it's just got a different energy, a different natural flow. And so I feel like I would love to see more community opportunities for parents and for, you know, family members and not just, you know, students all the time or not just staff, but also just to be like, let's get together in an effort to just benefit our students and as a whole, by all coming together and thinking up different ideas. The other thing I notice is so many parents have great resources. They work for, you know, a company or an agency that's got access to this, that. You know, you start to pool all those resources together and you can actually put on some really cool things. I know some of the, you play parties we've done at Central, it's like, oh, you've got a parent that's got a connection to this. And all of a sudden wanting to do something really new and creative, which is awesome. So again, I think we know parents want to help. I mean, anytime we ask for funding, it's really easy. Parents are really open to doing that. And I think it's just because it's easy and it's accessible. And so trying to find other easy, accessible ways for parents, you know, or not just funding, like writing a check, but even we are doing, um, food drives or, you know, like, we're doing a parent or a teacher appreciation or something like that. People are so generous and want to do that, but it's more if we can get more people to get.
Great. Let's move on to our final question.
If tough decisions come up where the community is divided, how would you approach that?
I mean, I feel like a broken record, but I think listening, I think that's another thing that we are kind of losing a little bit as a society, because everyone gets really siloed in what they think is right or wrong and aren't open to hearing the other. Even if you in your gut feel like, I'm never going to agree with this person, I always think you can like, take the hand off or take the passion out of it a little bit and just get down to all of us ultimately wants, what, want the best for our schools. We want the best for our kids. We want the best for our community. We may have different ideas about how to achieve that, but if we can all just keep reminding ourselves, like, you know, always coming in here with negative, you know, a negative outcome, you want the best outcome. It's just deciding how I get there. So I mean, doing my best to be collaborative, I mean, with my board members or, you know, various community members. I think that's another part of being and involved in all the different things at boards that I've been a part of in groups is you're going to get used to natural challenges. I think I'm providing my kids that all the time. I know you guys, you get partnered with somebody or, you know, you're in a group of something where it's just not, you know, it's not working real well. And that's a huge, huge life skill. It's just to learn how to continue to communicate, continue to be human to each other and do your best to come to some sort of solution, especially if it needs, you know, you both can just maybe let go a little bit and then help simply next to the same goal.
And kind of follow up on that. The school board is here, like, supposed to be nonpartisan. How would you ensure that that nonpartisanship continues if you were to be elected on the school board?
Yeah, that has been interesting, especially as someone new to this. I feel like I'm learning a lot and, you know, we have become such a political society that it's really hard to not be partisan in some ways. I mean, I know even, I'm sure you guys were aware that, you know, Wazetta is one of the two districts in the state where they're still doing elective elections for school board and people vote if the board is elected to realign that. So I'm actually running for a three-year term, up to then a four-year term, which is going to slowly get aligned to be part of the general election. There were useful ways about, you know, what would make that good, more people are going to turn out because coming out from the presidency, maybe you'll also vote for a school board member. But on the flip side, there's concerns that we want to work in that. Um, I think from my perspective, ultimately, politics are not always just values and I wanted to stay true to my values, my life experiences and to my best, other individuals in that same manner. So not get involved with who you voted for or what buzzword you're sort of in right now with what's happening in the world. So just like, what do you want? I just keep coming back to education was created to serve each and every student regardless of their background. And that's also one thing to me. And how we achieve that varies, but I want to just keep that in mind, that like, public education is here for a reason. Not everyone is going to get everything that, not, every student is not going to get exactly what they need, but that's part of the process too. It's going to be, how focused is it to be to meet which people that are in our face and hear what our experiences and backgrounds and, so.
But not a report.
Great. Does anyone have any additional feedback on that? Awesome. Great. So that brings us to our final few minutes. For our closing, we'll take questions submitted directly to the community who are watching us live on our YouTube. Let's start with our first question. And for this, only our candidate will be responding. Number one, how will you encourage your board members to participate at board meetings? I feel like we've already answered this a little bit, but if you have any other thoughts.
I mean. I love that, like, food is often, you know, a way to engage. So I don't know. I mean, I say that lightheartedly, but. Spoiler alert for anyone in the district liaison committee this year, but as president, I'm really hoping, I know we're always so crunched for time and it's always about like, let's just get to business, get things done. But I love being able to do a quick intro or being able to do some sort of like icebreaker or like something that just likes people and again, kind of change the humanity in the room a little bit. And whether that's food, whether that's having, um, some sort of, I mean, I think the board meetings can be really interesting, some of them. I mean, the last one was, I mean, I was with, you know, the little guy that came on, it was a third grader, came up, little Everett, and I mean, we all, it just lightened every, everyone's energy in the room. And it just felt like, okay, like, this isn't just like get business done, but this is also a really fun experience. It's a really, really good thing. So trying to come up with creative ways to just get the word out that, hey, you don't need to come to the meeting, you don't need to dress to serve, you don't need to know anything to come to the meeting. Just show up and take in what you can and bring it back out and we hope we'll see you again.
Amazing. Our second question is, what role slash how big of a role should school boards have involving student communities, such as clubs or extracurriculars?
It's a good question. Again, I will just say, I probably don't know as much as I need to know in the area of like, what the current rules or regulations are. So how big is school board involvement in that? I think the main thing I would just want to say about me personally is I'm not shy about sharing my opinion and my family about things. And so I would be a strong advocate of such good for student groups that I feel would be a really, that's a chance for students to their schools.
Question three, you spoke of various initiatives and policies that you would like to work on when you're on the board. If you had to, if you were to be elected on the board, if you were to pick one of those that you were to work on immediately, which one would they be?
Oh, gosh. Um, aside from the general, I know I have participated in some legislative conventions over the years, um, you know, meeting with our representatives in person and being able to come to them and just say, I need you to know, like, these are some policies or these are some votes that are coming up that would really directly impact Wazetta. And that's a variety. I mean, again, it usually comes back to funding of some sort and how that's going to like trickle down and impact multiple, whether it's transportation or classroom sizes due to teachers or cutting different, um, educational opportunities within the buildings. I don't know specifically. I mean, I think I mentioned also that technology is near and dear to my heart and I feel like I can bring it up for a while. I know I was happy to see like last year, all the middle schools turned out of line with their cell phone policies. That's been shifted this year, which is good. I've heard really good things about the high school, even though it felt like being a bit more pushback, that extra students are happy to know that like, there's no expectation that phones can be out during the school day. Maybe you guys are during the classes at least, I mean, have a passive period of things, but that's going to just continue to change. We're going to continue to have more technology that is pumped into that.
Amazing. All right. Well, that's all the questions we got from our live. So to wrap up, thank you, Alicia Little, for joining us today. And thank you to our student interviewers and all students who turned in live on our live Google feed. On behalf of Wazetta School Board Spotlight, we appreciate your time and your willingness to engage directly with students. Our goal is to make this election accessible and meaningful to the whole community and conversations like this are an important part of our work. Please look forward to our future candidate interviews and fill out our hush to engage form linked in our Instagram bio to stay connected and involved in this action. Thank you again.